regarding all of the employee organizations listed on the agenda, direction was given to the agency representative. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to public comments since. So for public comment, there are time limit of three minutes for anyone wishing to address the city council. On these matters and as for the matters not appearing on the agenda, if you wish to address city council concerning any item within the city's jurisdiction, please be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and uh state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. It is required that longer presentations be submitted to the city clerk's office in writing forty-eight hours before the meeting. I do have one public comment here. Do we have any others? About Ms. Mendoza with Cambria Hotel.
Good evening. Wanted to make sure that was on. Mayor Amparano, council, leadership and community. My name is Jase Mendoza, business development manager. For the GAFCON down the street. I'm here just to let you all know that we are officially open as of today. And we're here to invite you all to come on over. Thank you. It's been a very exciting day for us, you know, getting the last little kinks out of everything. I know some of you have been previewed to be able to walk through the hotel, but we are. Welcome you welcoming you all over to the hotel, to the bar, to the restaurant. If you want to take a quick tour, if you haven't had a chance to, please let me know. We are more than happy and here to say thank you very much to all of you for your help and support to get us to this point. Dennis Anoton, you guys have been amazing taking our hundred phone calls for us to achieve this project. So. We're very happy and thankful to be here and we hope that we get to see all of you out there at some point.
Thank you very much. We did get a chance to go and I appreciate the council for being there. I know this uh look very nice. Glad glad to see it open. Good things to come. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we're moving on to our presentations.
Little man's got a complaint about the parks. He wants more baby toys.
All right. So we're going to go to presentations. We're going to do the present. I'll read the proclamation and then we'll go down here and take pictures. The this one is for IT Professionals Day. And it says City of Imperial Proclamation, IT Professionals Day. Whereas National IT Professionals Day is celebrated on the third Tuesday of September each year to honor information technology professionals. Who maintain technology infrastructure and supports our daily lives business and government operations. And whereas IT professionals are responsible for the development, implementation and management of computer-based. Information systems, including software applications, hardware networks. Whereas the dedicated the dedication and expertise of IT professionals ensure the security, efficiency. And reliability of our essential digital systems. And whereas the City of Imperial acknowledges the hard work and modernization. That our development and innovation and technology staff has done. And thanks thanked them for keeping our city's technology running smoothly and securely. Now therefore, I the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the City of Imperial City Council proclaimed September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four as IT Professionals Day in the City of Imperial. Passed and adopted on this eighteenth day of September, twenty twenty-four at a regular council meeting. So thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you for the proclamation. We really appreciate that. Working on the IT industry is so complicated. That we don't have some time to remember that this is that yesterday was the day. However, with us tonight is the team. Eric Carroll, IT Technician Three, Ramiro Ramos, the GIS Project Manager, Luis Anguiano, Cyber Security Administrator. Alissa Uyoa, Admin Assistant. And we are working on the bringing on board the new IT Technician Three. And myself, Alejandro Strada.
Thank you guys very much for all the hard work. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
He's not gonna go to sleep till midnight.
Leave him alone.
He's good. I wish I had that energy. So next one we have on proclamation is for National HR Professionals Day. So this one's is a City of Imperial Proclamation on Human Resource Professionals Day. Whereas Human Resources Professional Day is celebrated annually on September twenty-sixth and is dedicated to honoring the invaluable contributions of HR professionals who play a critical. A crucial role in shaping the workforce, nurturing talent and maintaining positive work environment. And whereas human resource professionals use their expertise, innovation and creativity to develop new policies and procedures. To adjust to new work models and changing regulations. And whereas human resource professionals serve. Critical and strategic functions in organizations that attract, manage, engage and develop the workforce. And whereas the City of Imperial City Council acknowledges and supports the hard work of our Human Resources Division and all professionals nationwide. Therefore, I the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council proclaimed September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four as Human Resource Professional Day. In the City of Imperial passed and adopted on this eighteenth day of September, twenty twenty-four at a regular council meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council for honoring HR professionals. You know, we really appreciate the recognition. We. We see ourselves as organizational partners for all the departments here to support and also for helping our workforce reach their full potential. And we couldn't do it without our team, Alyssa Farrell and Adriana Zamudio. They're amazing at what they do and. Adriana couldn't be here tonight, but Alyssa is here as well.
The last proclamation we have for today is for. The library. So City of Imperial Proclamation for our library card proclamation. So it says library card signup month. Says whereas September is library card signup month and this year's theme is Transformers. Featuring Optimus Prime, encouraging everyone to roll out to their libraries for a library card. And whereas during this time, the American Library Association and libraries unite in a national effort to ensure every child signs up for their library card. And to remind parents that a library card is the most essential essential school supply of all. And whereas having library cards offers a multitude of benefit, including. Access to books, ebooks, digital resources, multimedia, events, learning opportunities and community engagement. And whereas the Imperial City Council recognizes libraries as a gateway to lifelong learning and encourages everyone in our community to sign up for a library card. Now therefore, I the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council do hereby proclaim the month of September, twenty twenty-four. As library card signup month in the City of Imperial passed and adopted on the eighteenth day of September, twenty twenty-four at a regular meeting of the Imperial City Council. Congratulations.
I come in fear. Not to speak. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for recognizing library signup month, a library card signup month. So on behalf of the Imperial Public Library, I want to express our gratitude for proclaiming. Library September, library card signup month. We're thankful for the opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of having a library card. Library Card Signup Month is celebrated each September to coincide with the start of the school year. During this month, American Library Association and libraries across the nation work together to encourage every child to sign up for their own library card. Throughout the school year, our dedicated public library staff help parents and caregivers save hundreds of dollars on educational resources and services for students. With a library card, individuals have access to a wide range of benefits, including free STEAM programs, activities, educational apps, in-person and virtual homework help. Technology workshops and the expertise of librarians. A library card is one of the most effective, most cost-effective back-to-school supplies available. For tonight's proclamation, we have showcased some physical resources available. For tonight's proclamation, we have showcased some physical resources available at the Imperial Public Library that provide equitable access for our community. Additionally, we have provided a document to highlight the electronic resources also available. We are pleased to announce that additional library card designs will soon be available, including one of one featuring the photograph of the first. Including the photograph of the first library built in Imperial County. The Imperial Library, which was built in nineteen ten. Before you, there's a symbolic library card and we invite each of the council members to come, including the city leaders and join us for commemorating. Commemorating with the photo for library card. Thank you.
You know, this is gonna be epic, right? All these videos are recorded and it stays in the archives. When he gets older, you can go roll back and say, look what you put me through. And we're gonna be like, right on.
Often, so I'm sure it's like that star, like it's blippy. You guys are blippy. But with me, we also have two other library board of trustees. We have Ivan Soto Mayor Santos, Valentina Estes. Our library administrator, our librarian and library literacy services coordinator. I'm sorry. And so if you guys wouldn't mind, we can go ahead and have a photo and. Library cards, please.
So Amber, does this mean we have new library cards? These are ours?
And then.
Awesome. Awesome.
Original library that was built in nineteen ten.
I like that. Thank you. Thank you, guys. Bye. Bye. That was fun. All right. So with that, we'll move on to our item B or consent.
I was asking Ida if she got her technology back.
Item B, our consent agenda says all items appearing on the consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person request that any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up at that time as determined by the mayor. And I know that we have to have a reading for B nine.
Yeah, perfect. I'll just quickly read it into the record. Ordinance listed on B nine is eight two nine, ordinance of the City of Imperial. Amending the codified ordinances regarding food and food establishments and temporary uses for mobile food facilities.
All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion from Ms. Mendoza. Second by Ms. Martinez. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. Thank you guys very much for that. Appreciate it. With that, we'll move on to our action items. Item C one. Contract renewal with Axon Enterprises Inc. for additional five years for body worn cameras and tasers for Imperial Police Department personnel. This is by Chief Reel.
Good evening, mayor and council. The Imperial Police Department is requesting to renew our existing contract with Axon Enterprises. They are the sole vendor that we use for body cameras and tasers. And the additional term is for five years. The renewal, the renewal is also for the purchase of. And the additional term is for five years, the renewal, the renewal is also for the purchase of five additional body cameras and five additional electronic control devices. The agreement also includes increased number of licenses for the users themselves and then our existing contract is set to end in December. So the total cost of the agreement is is listed and if we don't act within the next month or so, there's a new tick in the up the, in the raising of costs, there would be an additional eighty thousand dollars. So I'm requesting that this gets approved tonight for the use of the next five years of body cameras and electronic control devices.
Do we have any questions?
I do. How come there's a difference in the cost for the first year?
So uh that I don't know. I I believe it's a pro rata amount considering if we renew now as opposed to wait until December and then afterwards, it is a pro rata amount. And I believe that was the explanation. Any other questions?
Just happened you brought this now instead of in December, so.
I will make a motion to approve the contract renewal with Axon Enterprise for an additional five years for body worn cameras and tasers and Imperial Police Personnel.
Okay, got a motion. And a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to items C two, award contract for Highway D six beautification phase one project. Bid number two four, two zero two four dash seven. And this is with uh Mr. Villegas with uh Community Development.
Yeah, good evening, uh Mayor Amparano and Imperial Council members. Um, uh directed by City Council, uh our department conducted a competitive bid for the construction of uh the AH, AHSC Alpha Highway eighty six beautification phase one project. Uh the project uh includes installation of curb and gutter sidewalks, ADA ramps, uh improvements throughout in several places of the city. Uh including rehabilitation of Worthington Road between Nance and Labroucheery Bike Lanes that goes along um Barioni Boulevard. Additional left turn packets on all Highway eighty six and a signalized street crossing at uh at uh Sixth Street and all uh Highway eighty six. Uh the bid opening took place on August twenty sixth and the um the uh we got only one um bid from Rove Engineering, even though the project was uh published on the city website. Hotel Tribune, Callexico Chronicle, uh several plan rooms and actually emails were sent out to local and non-local contractors. Since the work is mostly uh superficial, uh we are asking for a ten percent contingency for the project. Fiscal impact is going to be six point, uh slightly over six point six million dollars coming from AHSC Alpha SB one and general fund. Staff recommends to award the construction contract to Rove Engineering for said uh six point six million dollar and to authorize ten percent contingency. I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions?
So I do have a question. So there's um sidewalks that go when you're going on Barioni to cross eighty six. There's no sidewalks right there that connect you to the highway going down. I, um, will those be included in this project?
Sidewalks along Barioni on eighty six?
Yeah, like when it connects, interconnects into eighty six where it intersects into it. So like where the two gas stations are in the corner and there's the empty lot right there. So it was brought to my attention that there's no sidewalks from a resident that's in a wheelchair and he had to go pay his IID bill and he's like, I had to go onto the street and then cross the highway.
In the median.
In the median, yeah.
I'm afraid that is not part of the project, but anyways, I can, I can uh go back and if that part is not part of the project, I'll be sure to address that to our consultant, uh which is Chen Ryan and associate the, the consultant who prepared the project.
Okay, yeah, I was from a senior resident that's in a wheelchair.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, we are here to address problems, not to make it worse.
When I drove by and looked and I was like, oh man, there's not, you know, so um. But I would, I would say I will uh make the motion to approve.
I just had one quick question, with the funding being ASIC funding, was it um awarded as part of a, a housing project? Was it maybe one of the apartment complexes or how did we get that ASIC funding?
Yeah, part of the funding are 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 coming from AHSC in in Alpha. So uh the um, the benefit is to connect actually the La Luna Apartments along, along.
I I figured it had to be associated with some housing developments.
Definitely, yeah, 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 besides the the roadway improvements is going to be bike lanes.
Okay, thank.
Encourage people to use that transportation.
Couple of questions, Azuz. Uh number one, um if awarded, when would the project start? When are we breaking ground?
Definitely, it it would be probably twenty days because um.
Mid October?
Mid October, yes. We have ten days after the 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 uh, the project is is approved to work with the contractor, get all the paperwork. Sign the um, the the contract agreement and then after that's about another ten days for the contractor to do mobilization.
Okay, and project timeline?
If everything goes right, it should be three months.
Okay. And then last one, you said something that caught my attention. I thought we were not using Chen Ryan anymore.
This is, yeah, probably this is why. Uh no, this, this is the contract uh that was placed years ago.
Correct, and in the last conversation we had in Mr. Marita's office is we were gonna use the drawings and plans that came out of Community Development.
Yeah, we we actually.
That's what we're doing, right?
Close to Chen Ryan to do several modifications because actually didn't address many things. Actually, we we were talking about with uh Mr. Dale, uh especially along eighty six, we pushed hard to do the left turn packets because they not even want to do it. And it's going to be addressing a really sensitive problem because people pick ours. I mean, you have three, four cars along eighty six and yeah, yeah.
We need those turn pockets.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, we, yeah, it was, it wasn't easy to deal.
And that was the concern with Chen Ryan is they didn't want to do that. They wanted it their way and and we paid for the plans, we want it our way.
Oh no, definitely, because we want to address the problems we know we have.
We know we have.
Yeah, I mean, it's not.
Okay, so once they're done with this, no more, it's not, we're not renewing contracts.
That's my understanding, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Alright, so I got a motion and a second, uh please vote. Oh, oh, I thought we had a second.
Have a motion.
Oh.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion. Spurworth in a second by Mr. Tucker, please vote. Look forward to seeing this project come through.
Oh no, yeah.
Excited.
Rest assured, we'll make it happen.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item uh C three, parking modifications in front of City Hall on South Imperial Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Street. And uh this will be Public Services Director, Mr. Dale.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, good evening. This item, we had brought already to the DRC for review and approval and the Traffic Commission. Uh basically what it is, is we are removing two spaces in front of City Hall, which parking is at a premium. But we also have a problem with um sight, line of sight vision as you're departing or leaving the parking lot at City Hall. So uh we left those two spaces not marked so that um staff and the, and the public could see basically what it would feel like not to have those two parking spaces and the, and the response that we've got basically was that it is better and it's easier to 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 exit the parking lot. Also, as a part of this proposal, um we are um basically eliminating the fifteen minute parking spaces inside of the City Hall parking lot and relocating those to off-site on, along Imperial Avenue. One of the comments from the Traffic Commission was that uh they'd like to see a a small sign underneath the fifteen minute parking saying Monday through Friday for um eight AM to five PM and excluding holidays, which we certainly can add those signs as well.
Any questions? Comments, concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion from Mr. Tucker.
Second. Sorry.
Second by Ms. Burnworth, please vote. This is that new law that passed, right? Why were the crosswalks and all that stuff?
Council, I didn't fail to mention that you've already approved the removal of the crosswalk, so that's, the, the crosswalk is already um been gone, yeah. Two months ago, so effectively we're losing two spaces, but we added two spaces by removing the su- the.
Yeah.
The crosswalk out.
The motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item C four, modify traffic signal at intersection off of Highway eighty six and uh Fifteenth Street to a split phase system and remove unmarked pedestrian crossing as recommended by Traffic Commission.
Yep, and as you just mentioned, we did bring it to the Traffic Commission and DRC both uh were approved. And essentially what this proposal is, is to modify the signal at Fifteenth and eighty six to, from a permissive type of light, signal light, to a split phase. And the difference is uh basically a permissive is left-hand turns have to wait for straight oncoming traffic to go through first. And and then they can turn left, uh that causes some safety concerns and um in terms of traffic control, that the split phase could be a a small delay for straight through traffic. Uh I went out there myself to see kind of like how the traffic was flowing and what I saw was at least as many left-hand turns as straight turn, as straight throughs. So I I don't believe that there would be much of a delay for straight through traffic in this case. And also, the city can also modify the timing. Well, it will be, um, we have a ci- a civil engineer, actually a traffic engineer to, will design this and its proposal is in, in your staff report. And uh they will recommend the timing, but the city can, we can always modify it if we see that, okay, the left-hand turns, there's, we need more time or we need less time. So that can always be modified as necessary.
Can this also be modified during school, for school hours and timeframes or no?
Uh they, I believe we have a computer program that can modify as per time, yes.
Great. Any questions, the council?
I think this is. There's a really needed project right there, especially around the junior high. When you're turning left, it's.
Difficult.
You gotta, you know, pray through the intersection sometimes, so.
These are safer methods, they just could create a little bit delay for straight through traffic, but and I might mention that all of our traffic signals in the city are split phase. There is no permissive except for this one.
It's a good start.
I'll make a motion to approve the modification of the traffic signal at Highway eighty six and Fifteenth Street to a split phase.
I got a motion from Ms. Mendoza.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Tucker, please vote.
With that being said, Mr. Dale, what, whenever it says removal of unmarked pedestrian car- crossing, if it's unmarked, what are you removing?
So there are still, there's still a crossing there and and I'm sorry, I didn't mention that, yes, as part of this project. Um, there's a crossing where there's a pedestrian head-to-head, what they call, so pedestrians can still cross because they push the button to cross, but there's no marked.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item C five, award the contract for janitorial and cleaning services, RFP number two zero two four dash seven by Community Services Director, Mr. Dale.
Well, yeah, uh Public Services Director. Anyway, um so. Community Services.
I'm sorry, Public Services Director.
No.
Apologize.
Um, I didn't want to take anybody's thunder, um so. Ms. Morewood, yes.
She's got two jobs.
I think this might be a long-awaited item for staff. This is uh, we, Public Services went out to RFP for janitorial services, um received several bids, um proposals for this. The, the lowest and best bid uh was from Base Hill Incorporated. And that's what we're recommending, the estimated cost would be sixty three thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars. That would be for the initial deep cleaning and then the, and including the annual cost. This will free up our building, some of our building staff to actually work on repairing and upgrading our, our existing buildings. And so it is, it is something that is needed.
I'm, I'm looking at this and I know we have a schedule, but let's say the police department, Monday, Wednesday and Friday, would it, you know what it entails or it's just throwing the trash?
No, no, this is much more than just throwing out the trash, this is definitely cleaning janitorial services. Absolutely, and the initial would be, the first cleaning would be a, what they call the deep cleaning. So.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve the award number, RFP number twenty twenty four dash zero seven for janitorial and cleaning services to Base Hill Incorporated.
I'll second.
Got a motion from Ms. Burnworth, second from Ms. Ms. Martinez, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item C six, award the contract for rehabilitation of various roads in the city of Imperial. Project bid number two zero two four dash zero eight by Ms. uh Public Services Director, uh Mr. Dale.
Yes, thank you, thank you for that, I appreciate it. So this one, I'm, I'm, I'm excited about all these items, but this one is especially exciting. The last, the last time we uh, we bid this project, we had to rebid it, as you might recall, we, the council approved rejecting the bids because there were some discrepancies. So this time the bid went well and um we got, we got three bids, the lowest bid is from Rove. And uh you see before you in your staff report, there's alternative one and alternative two. And the reason there's two alternatives is because we did an, what we call additive bid items. So depending on how the price came in on the bids, the council would have the choice to add certain streets or all of the streets as a result of how much money you would, you're willing to spend on the project. Now, I'm, we've got our finance director here. I, I understand that there's approximately two point three million and you can um. Two point three million in general funds available, also there is, I believe, six hundred thousand in EDA funds because there are three areas in the project that are in the commercial area, specifically Preble Road, which is in front of the dealerships and uh Labroucheery Road north of Ayton and I believe Myrtle Road could be considered um a commercial corridor. So those three streets would be around the six hundred dollar, thousand dollar area. If you wanted, if the councils are, so your pleasure to um include all of the additive bid items, we could. Or you could assign a certain uh dollar amount from the general fund and we, we would um prioritize the additive bid items or you can just award the, the base bid depending on your pleasure.
Questions?
I like the, the amount there.
They're gonna put in ninety nine cents.
By ninety nine cents? Not to exceed.
Right, so, so their funding sources are, are separate, right? That's why it says three point nine million or almost four million, as you so rightly pointed out. Because there's water enterprise and sewer enterprise funds involved here for raising and lowering the utilities. So those, I'm not counting against the general fund, what we're really considering here is general funds uh costs, so.
I'm interested of why this is like half the cost of the last construction project we just approved and they only received one bidder and this one received three.
They're totally separate types of projects, this, this project has, this project has landscaping, sidewalks, curb and gutter, replacement of certain um other things inside. This project that I'm bringing to you now is strictly paving and and that's it. And there's quite a bit of of paving here that we're proposing. And must, some of it's in the Sunset Ranch area, some of it's in the Wildflower area. And again, I mentioned the commercial areas that are also included. These, these are streets that I, I, when I drove the city, I mean, these are the ones that really came out, popped out the most. There are still some other streets that I really desperately want to address, but due to funding, we'll have to like hope next, next year or the year after that we can maybe address those ones and we still want to. But we just tried to pick the ones that were just the worst, um of the worst, so.
Myrtle has, yeah, nevermind, yeah. Okay, any other questions?
Excited for the roads.
Any motions, any?
I'll make a motion to approve the award to uh, the contract to Rove Engineering for pavement rehab, bid number twenty twenty four dash zero eight.
Which, and the amount?
Say the amount.
Say the amount. Only nine hundred and ninety nine.
That include everything?
That includes in, the entire project, all of the additive bi- bid items in front of the school on fifteenth street. Um, H Street south of Worthington where it's, you know, in the, very visible in the downtown corridor. Uh, it includes uh the, the projects that we as city tried to fix with the slurry seal over in uh Victoria Ranch. So it, it includes.
Those.
Those, all those streets, so, yeah.
Then I'll, I'll second that one.
Alright, so I got a motion for Ms. Mendoza and a second by Mr. Tucker to approve the three million nine hundred ninety nine thousand. Nine hundred ninety nine dollars um bid.
Good job.
So, uh with that, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And last question, um, start time for this and duration.
So I, I do wanna uh thank our city manager for putting this on our, our agenda tonight because we did put a rush on it. The bids just opened on Thursday, uh so this is unusual that we could get it so fast, so thank you. Um, but we're gonna try to push as fast as possible and the reason is because this, part of the slurry seal is part of this project. It requires a certain temperature, so we want to get it done by say, like November if possible, so. My next call tomorrow morning will be to the contractor, when can we get going, like that's going as soon as possible, yes.
You really wanted to start before the time changes?
Yeah. And it gets too cold.
So.
Um, can I bring up something that we, we need some clarification on because of the fact that we did mention the name of it? If you look at your agenda item, it says that the total cost for awarding the entire project is three million nine hundred nine hun- ninety nine thousand nine hundred nine nine. If you go to the next page of the agenda item, Rove Engineering's total cost was three million, three hundred thousand.
Well, we're not giving them.
That was probably general, uh maybe a, an error or it's, because that's just a general fund part of it, I'm not sure which one.
Yeah, because it shows the total combined part and I just, do we need to make some clarification on what we're awarding because we did.
Do we have a?
I, I noticed it when we were talking, so I think that the correct number is just under four million and that's exactly what we voted on, right? But in the staff report, it does mention that lower number twice, so I, if, if, David, if you could just double check.
Yes.
It is my understanding that exactly how you voted is the final request and it's likely a funding issue for the lower number.
Right, no, it is, I believe, three point three nine nine, three point three, three hundred, that's the number, so the three.
Even though, well, uh, okay.
Three nine 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 is, is the one in error, I believe it's three point three nine nine.
Okay, because if you look at the bottom of your fiscal impact on the third page of the staff report, it, it also comes to that three nine nine nine.
You're probably right, yes.
I looked at it and then just when I saw that page, I thought that if, Victor, if you can.
Okay.
You think that might be the contingency part of it?
I tried to do the additives and, and if we could just double, double check. Before we end this, because we could fix it tonight.
We would have to. End it even though we already. Standby.
Or maybe we give him, do you want to give him a minute and then?
Yeah, let's go through that.
Yeah, David, take a, take a minute, so we'll clarify it and, and I think everyone agrees as to what the total project is, including the additives. But if we could clarify that tonight before we close out.
So with that, let's start with department reports, so we'll start with uh our community development.
Uh, yes, just to uh inform that we're increasingly uh working more in the seventh, tenth and fourteenth street. Improvement project, so uh the manholes, sewer manholes have been replaced about fifty percent. And that let me to uh remind uh our citizens, tomorrow we'll have a, a road closure. At the intersection of tenth and Imperial Avenue, it's going to be for a few hours to install a new. Uh sewer manhole in that location, um, this has been published in our city website, Instagram, I mean all. Facebook, uh it's important, it, it's an inconvenience and it's only for, for one day, let's call it one day. Other than that, uh it's pretty much what we have.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
So, uh, go ahead.
You want more time?
No, I, I just, I just added the uh, I just, I have the bid opening for the bid, the proposal. For Rove right in front of me, I just added the numbers, it's three point three nine nine, nine nine nine, so three, almost three point four total. Of that, about four hundred thousand is water and sewer enterprise and that's for the, it's for the full bid. The base bid was two point eight one seven, nine nine nine, and the added bids were five hundred eighty two thousand. So the, those two added together are three million, three hundred and ninety nine, nine hundred and ninety nine dollars, yes.
So that's the correct?
Yes, so in the staff report, if you look at um, under alternative one. You, you see that, that those are numbers should be fairly accurate right there, except. I think it was two point eight instead of two point nine.
So if we could, this is a little unorthodox, but we can clarify that it's exactly the way that it, if, we could do one more vote just to clarify. Exactly, um, my opinion is that what you voted on, it just had a typo in the total number. You're still awarding the exact same bid to the exact same party, it's just a different total and so, um, if we could just. Or, or clerk, if you can make a note of it and see. I, I think so, just to make sure, yeah, just to clarify the typo.
Ms. Mendoza, would you?
Okay, I will, well, I didn't add the cost. So I can go just back to my general motion, approve the award of the contract to Rove Engineering. For the pavement rehab of various roads in the city of Imperial, bid number twenty twenty four dash zero eight.
Second.
Alright, got a motion and a second, please vote.
Nobody's getting a six hundred thousand dollar ticket.
Motion, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, alright.
And we'll make a note of it in the minutes that it was just clarifying.
Okay.
It was a mistake.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Yeah, with that, I think the next one up for department reports would be our public works director.
Public services director.
Trying to change your title here, David. Sorry.
I think that's enough for me.
You got all the money, all the, all the work.
You should have enough work now to keep you busy.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it, thank you.
Nothing, you're good?
I'm good, thank you.
Alright, we're gonna, Ms., Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
I don't want to mess up titles here.
I just wanted to make sure David had another minute to cheer, you got nothing else? So uh, you know, uh, we're, we're at that time where, you know, we have our special wins coming down, uh Fiesta is on the. Uh nineteenth of October from five to nine and then we have trunk or treat right after that from six to ten at Eagle Park. So come join us for those, we're excited, uh, we're meeting with reps for vets, we have selected our next charity. For our uh five K color run, um, we're meeting with them tomorrow, hopefully we can lock everything in with them. I think it's a great cause to, to support our veterans, uh and they do great work, so. I'm, I'm excited to see that come through, uh and I think we'd get a, a really good turnout in support of our veterans. Uh, the, the other thing is I want to say that I'm very proud of my staff, we're up to currently sixty thousand dollars raised. And sponsorship dollars, uh, we've in the last two years gone up and up and they've really done a great job of. Uh not only sending letters out, thank yous to everybody that sponsored, uh but also going and knocking on those uh local business doors. And making sure we can get as many as we can to put these special event, events on for the community. Um, and I also want to thank, uh, we just kicked off our uh first meeting to organize the event in October. And I want to thank all the departments that are involved, it's really a citywide uh effort to put these things on. Uh, everybody's involved from public services to the city manager's office, we have, even have our city manager try, trying to pour beer. Out there, you know. He's giving it the old try, but.
Is it like, oh, this is spilling, hold on.
It's better at drinking.
Uh, but uh, that's all I have.
So I have a question, Tony, so you talked about the sixty thousand dollars raised in sponsorships, is that donations to the Friends of Imperial Park? Or is that to the city of Imperial?
That is to the city of Imperial.
Okay.
So that is to put on the different things that we not, might not necessarily be able to pay for with public dollars.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Strada?
Um, nothing in particular, um, all the, I think we have thirteen projects going on, the ones approved. In the budget, including um the G I S, we, we started it soon with uh P O's moving forward. And um, I don't know if you noticed it, uh but I attended yesterday the I D meeting in regards to the. To the attachments rates that they're proposing, so they're gonna take action on October and be effective on November. I think first or something around.
And what was this for?
Um, as you know, we, we have this uh broadband project that includes cameras and wifi in parks. There is some technologies that are attached directly to the I I D, there was not a component that allow us to, to. Read the consumption, so going back and forth, uh, they uh give us a solution and they're gonna implement two rates. Based on the, what's the, the devices consume, what we, what we call in a smart box and well, finally we have that.
Good. Glad to hear that.
Thank you very much for I I D, whoever was uh leading that project because it was a challenge.
But you got it done, Alex.
Yeah, you got it done.
Yeah.
Thank you, appreciate all the hard work.
That also opened the possibility for another uh agencies, I mean, because this is rates the, any other city. I think we always try to be pioneers in different things, so that opened the, the door for another, another agencies.
Awesome, glad to hear that, thank you.
Well, speaking of which, you guys had a really good article, I don't know if it was mentioned before, but in Plexico.
Like I'm tired of being in the news, so. Yeah, I don't know, yeah. Yeah, also Ra- Ramiro had a good article regarding the G I S, yeah. When I started working in I T, I always wanted to be kind of low profile, but not anymore.
I don't think I've ever met an I T guy that wants to be high profile.
Don't, I mean, I don't want to share things like configurations or stuff like that, but I mean, at this point is, is what it is, right, so.
The credit goes where credits do, so being a s- you know, smart city and all that, like it just painted a really good light.
Absolutely.
I'm very proud, I'm very proud.
You know, and, and to echo what Katie's saying is that when you start looking at it, with all the seven cities within Imperial County, we're the first one that has a. Citywide network, that's free wifi, you know.
We are going, we are preparing uh, hopefully, uh, and because so with delays. Uh, probably by um, end of October, November, uh bringing a presentation of the entire project for, for. You to see what we have been done and, but I'm, at the same time, nothing of this is possible with. Council support, city manager and all the departments, because most of the ta- the technology that we put in place is, all the projects is. Um, uh, within in-house.
Yeah, so, good, well, thank you guys very much for the hard work, really appreciate it. Gotta follow that one, chief.
He actually get used to be in the paper eventually. So actually on a lighter note, um, before, just prior to council, we had a brief pursuit with a turtle. And we've released it to its owner, we did not charge him with biting an officer because he did bite me when I was feeding him. Um, I'm okay, um, but yeah, so yeah, there's a turtle being released as we speak to the owner, so, uh, other than that, I have not.
This is real?
Yes.
A, a real turtle?
It, no, it's absolutely true, it's, it was a, it was a, it was a tortoise picked up at Vaquero and Cannon in the middle of the street. It was a brief pursuit.
They actually go very fast sometimes.
I was actually surprised how quick he could bite too.
Faster than your reactions.
True.
Well, good, glad to hear that, thank you. Gotta, come on, gotta, gotta come up with some.
Um, yeah, I actually do have something, uh, we hire an accountant, so it's in-house, uh hired, so. She started, it's Erica Lopez, she started, I don't know if she was gonna mention it, but still in her, um. As our accountant, so we're right now in the cross training and training up phase.
Great, glad to hear that, congratulations.
Thank you.
So for H R, I have nothing to report today, but I'd like to say, uh, I'm very proud of all the work that all the departments have been doing and. All of these projects that you guys are talking about are exciting and um, I'm, I'm very proud to be here with you guys.
Thank you. But we start on uh with our city, oh, sorry, Mr. Marita.
Well, that certainly raises the expectation that I'll have something uh pithy to say. But uh, I just want to echo uh, uh, what Kristen um mentioned with respect to the departments. There, I, I, I'm finding it because of the talent that we have here. There's a, there's a balance that I, that I tried to uh walk in between. Um, doing what I think a city manager should do and, and staying out of the way and so uh. It's, it is, uh, it's, 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 it can be a challenge, uh, because I. Uh, my instincts aren't always right as I look back on them, but uh, um, everybody's, I, my. My observation is that everybody's working hard and um, um, I, I think we have a good team. To uh pursue the policies and the visions that the council develops, so I'm, I'm proud to be here.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. About our city attorney?
Oh, nothing to report, thank you.
What our city clerk?
Nothing to report.
Okay, so we'll start on this side, Ms. Bishop Martinez?
I went to the old fashioned challenge, I did not partake in the old fashioned drinks, but it was a really nice first inaugural event. Um, held by the city and also the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber, some people here were. Judges. Some people were attendees, but it was a really nice event, um.
Judging is difficult.
Uh huh. But that was good, it was a really, really nice event, attended a small but mighty um ribbon cutting for the Cambria Hotel, so. You can make a reservation now, if you so choose, with, you don't want your in-laws there or the holidays or somebody that aunt you don't like or uncle. For other news, Wolfall Ween is coming up, you know, people who have their dogs or cats, you want to dress them up. But the holidays for the Humane Society, that'll be on October fifth at Fitness Oasis here, it's always really cute and they do have a. Costume contest for that, so my pug was a race car driver. And then he was a spider one time, so yeah, it's, it's fun.
Nice.
Yeah.
Awesome, Ms. Bernwood?
I also attended the ribbon cutting for the Cambria Hotel and I will just say it exceeded like every expectation I had for it. I would encourage anybody to check it out, like when you walk in, I just went in to, was in San Francisco last weekend. And it literally feels like you're walking into a hotel that is not in the Imperial Valley, like it's in a bigger city and, but it still has like. Pieces of home in it, you know, pictures of the valley on the wall and stuff and so, yeah, it's really cool, so, um, but yeah, I would encourage anybody to check it out. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Mendoza?
I have nothing to report, sir.
Mr. Tucker?
Yeah, I also attended the old fashioned and the Cambria and diddles to what the girls said, it was, both were great.
James is an excellent dancer.
Well, they didn't judge me, but I was the only one to dance, so I had to win.
I had no idea. Wow.
Thank you guys, I, I, once again, I, I was a judge for the old fashioned uh competition and uh, competition was a little difficult, I ain't gonna lie. Um, some of the drinks that came out were specialty drinks, um, their own recipes and all that good stuff. And, you know, when you have multiple teams and trying to choose the, the best one, it's hard, uh, because they were all good, but we did have to find one. One winner and the winner was Cambria, Cambria Hotel won and, and if you want to try their signature drink, they. There's, they're right down the street, um, very, very good. What's that?
And open for business.
And open for business, um, yes, I also, me and Mr. Marita went yesterday, uh, in the evening to the Cambria, looked at it and to. Tour it, yes, it looks like something that's not in the valley, um, and then the nice part is if you look, there's a section where they're selling. Postcards of Imperial County, of the valley and stuff like that, so that was nice to see, um, so just all around. Great, great uh hotel, I'm glad, I'm glad we're there, I'm excited to see that our paving projects are coming, um, our, all of our projects are coming. Our, our new uh signature series for this year is coming, I mean, we, Imperials. Our, our new, uh, signature series for this year is coming, I mean, we, Imperial's moving forward, every, everything's happening. And it's that time of year, so thank you guys very much for all the hard work that you guys do, appreciate it, and I turn this meeting in at eight oh nine.